This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of October 16, 2023. Call the order, please.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Noak.
Here.
Councilmember Walchuck.
Here.
And Mayor Walagora.
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as strong.
Entertainer motion to approve the agenda this evening.
To move second.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilmember Noak.
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck.
Yes.
Hi. Thank you, and we've got a couple of proposed modifications to said agenda.
I would like to move that we remove 7(c) from the consent agenda and replace it with paying the Huron-Humane Society invoice of $5,625.
Second.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilmember Noak.
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck.
Yes.
Mayor Walagora.
Hi.
And Mayor Proton Johnson.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Approval of the minutes for regular and closed sessions of October 2, 2023, and special session of October 5, 2023. Any questions, issues with any of those? Excuse me. Public comment: Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during tonight's meeting for citizens to address council. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address to our clerk.
Angie Skiba, 635 River Street. I once again am going to just state to go on the record that I feel, and several people agree with me, the DDA is definitely overreaching in the latest expansion. People are opposed and should be released from future tax obligations before the vote goes through. They are double-dipping. Many businesses in the DDA feel a few favorites are getting special treatment and getting more money than others. I've spoken to several. And with the money and with the TIF money, and I wish the TIF money would be better explained by the city council in one of your ways that you explain to people exactly what TIF money is. I don't think they would be voting the same if they knew. Please vote to let these people out of those additional taxes. JNS, R.S. Scott, and Vanessa Fluelling. Thank you.
Okay, Angie. Anyone else here in the room? Anyone indicate online? So much, okay. Right. Tonight's consent agenda: A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $379,537.65 and authorize Mayor Walagora and Clerk Soick to sign the warrant. B is mayoral reappointment of Steve Gilmore, Claire Kostelik, and Matthew Voita to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on November 1, 2026. C is the Huron-Humane Society fiscal year 2324 contribution of $5,625. D is council reappointment of Allen Guest to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire November 1, 2026. E is a council reappointment of Tanner Kostelik and Don Labarre to the Harbor Advisory Committee for a three-year term to expire on November 1, 2026. F is a mayoral reappointment of Don Labarre, Carol Lund, Jessica Luther, Paul Sabrin, and Darlene Wilmot to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire on November 1, 2026. And G is transfer the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and Downtown Development Authority non-interest-bearing accounts with PNC Bank to interest-bearing accounts and authorize Clerk Treasurer Anasoyk to sign the Treasury Management Services Agreement. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilmember Noak.
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck.
Yes.
Mayor Walagora.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation. This is Forest to My Faucet. And Megan Hoffman is here from Huron Pines Americorps.
She's online.
Oh, she's online? Okay.
Hello.
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 Can you see and hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna try to share real quick. Okay, can you see this presentation?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Can you still see it? I just did something, so I want to make sure it's still up there.
Yeah, we're also.
Okay, perfect. So, hi, everybody. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Megan Hoffman. I am the Forest and Water Community Organizer. I'm a Huron Pines Americorps, serving with the DNR Forest Resources Division. And I'm gonna be talking a little bit about the Forest to My Faucet initiative. All right. So, is Michigan taking good care of its land and water is the main question. So, forests cover about 20 million acres in Michigan, which is 56% of our land area. Better than any other land use, forests protect the sources of our drinking water. If your drinking water comes from a well, river, or Great Lake, which it more than likely does, a forest helps to keep it clean before it reaches your tap. Water covers 26 million acres in Michigan, and the Great Lakes contain about 90% of the fresh water in the United States and about 20% of Earth's available fresh water. So, how Michigan takes care of its land and water, whether good or bad, impacts not only the people that live here, but the entire planet. Forests providing us with clean water is an example of an ecosystem service, which is a benefit a healthy ecosystem provides to humans. And clean water has a direct effect on our well-being, survival, and quality of life. So, are we taking good care of our forests? And are we taking good care of our water, which is a public good? And then some of the information I'm gonna be talking about tonight will show you that we could probably do a much better job at taking care of both our forests and water here in Michigan. So, just real quickly, how do forests and trees provide clean water? I'll just run through this list real quick. But vegetation slows water velocity, undisturbed soils and leaf layer reduce runoff and erosion, soil and vegetation filter pollutants. And then there's minimal infrastructure and impermeable surfaces in forests, like parking lots. In fact, a one-acre parking lot releases 36 more times water than one acre of forest, which I think is a pretty interesting statistic. And there's infrequent and small chemical spills. And then forests also regulate the timing and magnitude of stream flow. So, those are all really important ecosystem services that forests provide to us. So, water is a rather large topic, but Forest to My Faucet is focused mainly on how land use affects drinking water quality. Do you know where your drinking water comes from? For 25% of Michigan's population living in rural areas, their drinking water comes from a well, which uses groundwater. And there's over a million private wells in Michigan. And unlike public water wells, which must be regularly tested for contaminants, private wells are untested unless the property owner submits or arranges for samples to be sent to a lab. This lack of oversight puts well owners at risk for contaminated drinking water. If you live in an urban area, like 75% of Michigan's population, your drinking water comes from a municipal water utility. Some utilities use groundwater from wells like Kalamazoo and Lansing. And a few like Ann Arbor use surface water from rivers. But the majority of people in Michigan, almost 6 million, get their drinking water from a Great Lake. Cities like Marquette, Traverse City, Grand Rapids, and Alpena all rely on a Great Lake for their water source. So, this map here shows the five Great Lakes watersheds. And the data comes from the EPA 2022 State of the Great Lakes Technical Report. The green is forest land cover, yellow is agriculture, and red is urban built area. So, if you could pick which Great Lake you would want to drink from, based on this map, which one would you pick? Most people pick Lake Superior because Lake Superior is 91% forest land cover, 1% agriculture, and 2% urban development compared to Lake Erie, which is 19% forest land cover, 61% agriculture, and 18% urban development. Detroit is lucky because they get their water from Lake Huron, like Alpena does. And since most of that watershed is still forest cover in the northern lower peninsula in Canada, they're in pretty good shape. Lake Michigan and Lake Ontario are kind of in the middle there with 49% forest cover and about a third agricultural land use in their watersheds. There is a correlation between land use and lake quality. As forests decline and are replaced with farms and factories, lake quality also declines. So, you can see which lake these cities get their drinking water from, the EPA's lake status and the percentage of forest cover in the watershed. Marquette and Detroit's water sources are Lake Superior and Lake Huron. So, they're happy because their lake status is good. Cities like Monroe and Toledo that rely on Lake Erie for their drinking water shouldn't be as happy because they have a poor lake status due to too much agricultural land use. The green color on the chart actually matches. We did that purposely, the color of Lake Erie, to show because this picture here is a picture of Lake Erie when the algal blooms are bad. There's also a correlation between forest cover and pollution. As forest cover declines, pollution increases. A TMDL is the total maximum daily load. And a TMDL is developed by determining the maximum daily load of a pollutant that a water body can assimilate and still meet water quality standards. TMDLs are required by the Federal Clean Water Act for water bodies that do not meet water quality standards. The areas of gray on the map show areas that are not meeting water quality standards in Michigan and have TMDLs in place. TMDL development is a public process that works best with the involvement of all affected parties. Participation by local communities, local government agencies, and landowners leads to improved TMDLs and ultimately better water quality. And work in TMDL watersheds can be funded by grants and efforts to clean up non-point sources of pollution and are often led by local agencies, such as conservation districts or watershed councils, like the ones Forest to My Faucet is partnering with. And again, on this map, you can see that the TMDLs are in the areas with more people, farms, and factories, and the least amount of forest cover. So, the Forest Stewardship Program at the DNR is leading a team of 20 conservation partners that we're excited to work with on a project called Forest to My Faucet to help educate and bring awareness to landowners and the public about these connections between forests and drinking water. Our partners include conservation organizations, watershed councils, land conservancies, conservation districts, statewide and national organizations, all working together on the project across the state in priority watersheds. This project is funded by the USDA Forest Service. And it builds on the National Forest Deficit Spatial Analysis that the Forest Service put together in 2011 that identified priority watersheds that are important to manage for protecting surface drinking water. The dark blue here on this map shows these priority watersheds in Michigan, which is where our project is focusing our efforts. And the stars here show where our partners are located, and they're in those priority watersheds. Okay, so one of the main areas of focus for this project is partnering with municipal water utilities, where 75% of Michigan's population gets their drinking water and helping them implement their source water protection plans. A source water protection plan identifies land use in the watershed, point source, and non-point source pollution, and provides management options to protect water. Utilities don't usually have control over their whole watershed, so it's important for them to work collaboratively with others in the watershed to implement these source water protection plans. Managing forest well and protecting important watersheds can lower the cost at municipal water utilities. In fact, for each 10% increase in forest cover, treatment costs decrease by 20%. Unfortunately, contaminants in many groundwater and surface water sources exceed national health and safety standards. Non-point source pollution, which is pollution that does not originate from a single source like a factory, is a leading cause of water quality problems and comes from both urban and rural sources, such as fertilizers, herbicides, and insecticides from agriculture and lawns, nutrients and bacteria from livestock operations, sediment from crop lands, constructions, and eroding stream banks, and then things like oil, antifreeze, and salt from streets and parking lots. And most of the public are generally pretty unaware of these threats to their water quality and the connections between clean water and forests. Focusing on the treatment of drinking water alone is not sustainable or cost-effective. Protecting and managing forests in these source watersheds is essential for providing clean, safe, and affordable drinking water. And outreach and education to the public is key for protecting water quality upstream before it reaches these water utilities. We are hoping that this project will establish the groundwork for a future payment for ecosystem service market, where upstream landowners get compensated for managing their forest well to protect the water quality downstream. And I encourage all of you to look at the Source Water Protection Plan for the city of Alpena if you haven't already. So, there are ways that we can better protect and manage forests, as well as expand forests to benefit water quality here in Michigan. And these are the main areas of focus for this project. So, forests are the first barrier for source water protection, but they're facing quite a bit of development pressure. In the Northeast and Midwest states, 12 million acres of forests are projected to be lost by 2030. We are working with watershed councils and land conservancies to protect forests and important watersheds through conservation easements and nature preserves. And then they're focusing on outreach and education to landowners as well. Managing forests well. So, Forest to My Faucet is working with landowners, foresters, and loggers to manage forests better. Michigan Master Loggers uses forestry best management practices to protect soil and water quality in the woods. There are 80 master loggers in Michigan, but all of them are in the northern part of the state, as you can see on that map there. There are currently none in the southern lower peninsula, which is where the majority of the population is located. So, with this project, we're trying to recruit 25 new Michigan Master Loggers and 250 new Michigan Forest Association members in the southern part of the lower peninsula, as well as help train 1,500 loggers statewide on best management practices to better protect forests and manage our forests. And forest certification also promotes better management of public and private forests. And there are three private certification organizations here in Michigan available for landowners. And lastly, expanding forests in strategic places. So, Forest to My Faucet plans to expand forests by planting trees in strategic places like riparian zones in rural and urban areas. Riparian zones are the interface between land and water and are extremely important for protecting water quality. Riparian forests and agroforestry practices help keep soil nutrients and manure on farms instead of in our drinking water, planting trees near streets, buildings, and parking lots, installing rain gardens, and the use of green infrastructure in cities, and then planting in rural areas after timber harvests on degraded land, abandoned farmland, and near rivers and lakes. And then also, planting trees really empowers people, gives them a sense of ownership, and makes them feel like they're making a real positive difference in their communities. Partners on the project are hosting tree planting events to plant 60,000 trees in rural and urban riparian areas of their source watersheds. And the DNR will plant 750,000 trees in these priority watersheds as well. So, Huron Pines is our partner focusing their efforts in the Thunder Bay watershed, which is identified by the Forest Service as a priority watershed. So, I will let Amy with Huron Pines discuss what they're doing in your area to help protect drinking water and the work they're doing related to Forest to My Faucet.
Yeah, thanks, Megan. Great job with the presentation describing the statewide effort. So, Alpena is pretty lucky to be a part of this. And we were selected to be a part of this project because our drinking water comes from Lake Huron, and that's really important to protect. Just really quickly, Huron Pines does a lot to protect healthy forests and drinking water. We have a land protection program where we own nature preserves. We try to get people outside to connect with nature and appreciate it, help them understand where their drinking water comes from. And specifically, through this project, we, Huron Pines, will continue to work with city staff and the Alpena Water Utility to do two things. Number one, provide education and outreach to the community so people can build their awareness on where their drinking water comes from here. And also to plant trees to protect drinking water in the Thunder Bay watershed. And so, we're working and having conversations. We want to have an event, just like Megan described, where we would help people or show people how to plant trees. And we would love to do that on a city parcel. You know, those conversations are happening, so we haven't selected anything yet. So, later, in 2024, we would seek city council's approval for something like that. And are there any questions about the project?
I don't have any. It was quite the presentation, quite a bit of information in there. So, I couldn't come up with any questions, really.
It is a lot of information, and this is our very shortened version of the presentation, so.
What's a rain garden?
Oh, what's a rain garden? Great question. So, a rain garden is like an engineered garden where it's excavated deeply, and there's different soil layers in there so that any stormwater runoff that goes into the rain garden, it captures the runoff and filters it and gets rid of any pollution before that runoff would run into the river or the lake.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we have one by the water tower, by the skate park. Between the skate park and the river, there's a rain garden. Am I correct? Am I right about that?
I believe so. And there's actually a couple of new rain gardens being constructed right now at the National Marine Sanctuary, the Great Lakes Maritime Heritage Center.
Cool.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And if you have any questions, feel free to email me. It's up there, or our website has a lot of information as well. Thank you again.
Will do. Thank you. On file and receipt, the presentation. Do we do that? Is that necessary?
Yes.
I move for your receipt and file. Second.
Councilmember Walchuck.
Yes.
Mayor Walagora.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Johnson. Councilmember Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilmember Noak.
Yes.
All right, thank you. One important announcement this evening. Halloween Trick or Treat hours in the city of Alpena will be held, will be 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. on Tuesday, October 31, 2023. I have a proclamation this evening. Michigan Library Appreciation Month. Whereas the Michigan Library Association annually designates the month of October as a statewide observance to celebrate the contributions of Michigan's public school, academic, tribal, cooperative, and special libraries. And whereas Michigan's libraries are essential institutions that serve as cornerstones of knowledge, learning, and community engagement. And whereas libraries play a vital role in fostering education, lifelong learning, and literacy for people of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities. And whereas libraries provide a welcoming and inclusive environment that encourages exploration, discovery, and personal growth. And whereas libraries offering access to a diverse array of resources, including books, digital media, education programs, and technology. And whereas libraries play a significant role in promoting the right to read and the right to access information, enabling individuals to make informed decisions and engage in open discourse. And whereas libraries provide essential services to underserved communities, bridging the digital divide and offering critical support for job seekers, students, and individuals seeking to improve their lives. And whereas hundreds of libraries and millions of libraries and millions of library supporters across Michigan are celebrating Michigan Library Appreciation Month this October. Now, therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, Mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Michigan Library Appreciation Month and encourage all residents, community organizations, and public officials to join in celebrating the libraries in our state, their dedicated staff, and the countless ways in which libraries enrich our lives and contribute to the betterment of society. And Jessica Luther from our local library is here. Okay, next we have report of officers. First is the second reading of ordinance number 23-496, which expands the boundaries of the Downtown Development Authority. And Bill Piper is here for that. If you remember, we postponed that from the last meeting.
We did. It consists with council policy that's not yet, unless any of the individual members would like me to do so. I think council is also in receipt of Ann's update where the DDA is at. So, if council is ready to act, we just need a motion and a vote yes or no. And if council wishes to postpone it further in light of where the DDA is at in terms of their discussions, then you could do that as well.
Mr. Mayor, I would probably ask, in light of the information that's shared in here about the specialist assessments and the reimbursements, not being able to lock in an answer until November, I would ask that we postpone until we have all the information to make an informed vote.
I agree with that.
Yes. So.
To get that figured out.
I'm gonna make that motion. Motion that we postpone until November. I don't know if they'll have it ready by the first meeting or second.
Second.
I'll just put postpone to a November meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Walagora.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Johnson. Councilmember Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilmember Noak.
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up is the second reading of ordinance number 23-497, which adopts an amended and restated Downtown Development Authority Development and tax incremental tax financing plan. Bill?
Consistent with council policy, once again, this would not be read unless any of the individual members would like me to do so. But in light of your decision on A, assuming somebody will make a motion to postpone B as well.
I move that we postpone B until A meeting in November. Second.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilmember Noak.
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck.
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora.
Hi.
Motion three.
Thank you. Next up is the first reading of ordinance number 23-498, which modifies the city of Alpena zoning map and rezones a portion of 350 Pinecrest Street from R2 to OS1. Bill Piper?
Section 1 would be an amendment to the city of Alpena zoning map. The city of Alpena zoning ordinance follows. A portion of the parcel located at 350 Pinecrest Street shall be rezoned from R2 to OS1 to allow for the legal use of the property for individual and family services. Dimensions of the section being rezoned are outlined in yellow. Not sure if you have yellow on yours, but they're somewhere in the. Section 2 is the severability clause. Section 3 is the saving clause. Section 4 is the effective date, and it will take effect seven days upon expiration, seven days after publication of notice. And there was also a brief memo from Montiel relating to specific property, and the Planning Commission has already approved this, subject to council's approval.
All right, very good. It looks as though there was no opposition from anyone for that. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions before we move on. All right. See you next meeting on that one. All right, D is a financial report for the first quarter of fiscal year 2024. Anasoyk Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this report is at September 30, 2023, and it's at 25% of the budget. So this report is at September 30th, 2023, and it's at 25% of the budget. The first section is revenue. The original budget was at 11.7 million. We have since amended that to 11.8 million. So far, we have received 4.9 million, which is 41.89% of the budget. And it's about 180,000 more than last year at that point. Some of the variances, general government is high at 59.86%, and that's because we've collected over 96% of the budget for property taxes. Public safety is low at 11.78%. That's due to the annual reversing entry of ambulance fees. Other contributors to that include lack of liquor license revenue and state fire protection grant funds. Public works looks good at 26%. Community and economic development is low at 6.43%. That's because we budgeted 50,500 for ordinances, fines, and costs, and that was mostly due to a house demo. We only received 1,203 of that amount. We also budgeted 15,000 for marijuana licenses and permits, which we've received zero so far, but we expect to later on this year. Recreation and culture is low at 6.86%. 150,000 was budgeted for the River Center Pavilion and 15,000 for Huron Pines shoreline improvement. Both of these are grants, and neither has been received. We also budgeted for donation of 150,000 from the Wildlife Sanctuary Board, and that has not been received either. Transfers in are at 0%. That's because a majority of that budget is for ARPA projects, none of which have been completed yet. Moving down to the expenditures. Original budget is 12.7 million. We've amended that to just over 13 million. We've spent 2.6 million, which equals 20.55% of the budget. That is a little bit higher, about 160,000 more than last year. In the general government, it is low at 12%. We budgeted $265,000 for City Hall projects, windows, and interior rehab, neither of which has any expenses yet. Haven't made, we also haven't made our annual contribution to the pension fund, and that normally happens in December. Public safety is just under the 25%, so that's good. Public works is good at 20%. Health and welfare, that's just the contribution to the humane society at 25%. Community and economic development is a little bit high. We had a one-time expense for that house demo. We also paid 20,000 to Target, which is half of the total, so that kind of skews that percentage. Recreation and culture is low at 13%, and that's because of a lack of recorded capital project expenses, and that is the majority of the budget for recreation and culture. Transfers out is at 54%, and that's high due to the annual payment for the DPW building. So our original budget, we plan to take 932,121 dollars from fund balance. We have since increased that to 1,191,400. So I added another line there that shows the change in the projected fund balance, so it's 259,279 dollars. And on the next page, it shows, I added this slide because I think it just kind of helps show where that difference is coming from. These are budget amendments that have happened in the first quarter. We've got, the first two are revenues that have changed. They've increased. We received 20,955 dollars more from a state donation, more than we had budgeted. And the second one was a donation for fire safety equipment of 11,000. But further down, there's also a corresponding increase in expense for 11,000 for the fire safety equipment. Other things, a lot of them have to do with finishing up capital outlay projects at City Hall in the police and fire departments. There was also a carryover for functional fitness equipment and water rescue initiatives. There was a large carryover for, to complete Carter Street parking lot resurfacing. And 41,000 carryover to complete Ballard project on the bypass through the cemetery to SciTech Park, and then 48,000 for that house demo. So all of that has contributed to the 259,000 increase in reduction of fund balance. Last fiscal year, we had budgeted to take 608,000, and we are like, right now, just looking, but we're in the middle of our audit. It just started today. But very preliminarily, it looks like we're gonna add 600,000, so a complete swing. But a lot of that is because these capital projects weren't completed. It's not that's being carried forward to this fiscal year. Hopefully that makes a little bit of sense. Any questions on that?
Hannah, I just wanted to note that we are expecting a grant for the house demo.
Okay.
So that 48,000 will be taken care of, but I believe that's reimbursable. Yes.
Okay, excellent. That helps. All right, on to next slide, please. The cash balances and investments. Okay, and the first line, the Budget Stabilization Fund increased, and that's because we added a $5,000 budget appropriation. A little further down, the Tree Park Improvement Fund has dwindled to almost nothing, and that's because we are intentionally using up those funds. The Building Inspection Fund is a lot less than the previous year. It's at 8,000 versus 48,000 in fiscal year 22, and that was because there was no transfer from the general fund in fiscal year 23, and that's a good thing. It means they are self-sufficient. Way to go, Montiel and staff. The water, water fund is high, and that is due to the 3 million that we received for the Clearwell project. The stores, the stores fund is negative 711, or geez, 711 dollars. And that's kind of typical. If you look at two years ago, it was also negative, but that is corrected with a general fund transfer. So nothing to worry about there. Moving down to the general fund, we are 500,000 dollars more than last year at this point. It's steadily increased because fund balances increased. We've also been able to invest more of our idle cash. And speaking of that, last fiscal year, we budgeted 20,000 dollars to receive an investment income in the general fund, and we've received over 214,000 dollars. So that's really awesome. That also contributes to why we're not negative and taking from fund balance. Moving down a little bit, ARPA fund, we've done some projects. We still have a lot more to go. The Cemetery Trust Fund. The beneficial interest at the Community Foundation of Northeast Michigan increased because a transfer had to be made in last fiscal year because the fund could not be negative as a result of a down market. Equipment Fund is 300,000 higher than last year. We had planned to make a large equipment purchase in fiscal year 23, but that didn't happen. Revenues were also higher than anticipated. The Retirement Fund is down about 1 million dollars from the previous year. For comparison, the book value at June 30th was 23.49 million, so we're down 206,000. The market value decreased from 27.4 million on June 30th to 25.8 million on September 30th. So we lost 2 million in the span of three months. Employee, or the Retiree Healthcare Fund is at 2.3 million, which is 200,000 more than last year. The book value at, that doesn't look right. The book value at 630, that should say, was at 2.04 million. So we had an increase of 263,550 dollars. The market value increased from 2.21 million on June 30th to 2.37 million on September 30th. This was due to the city's annual contribution, not because the market got better and the investment.
There goes that question.
Yeah. So no questions on that section, then?
No.
And then the last slide is the list of investments by fund. I did add a line at the bottom that shows the change from the previous quarter when I reported. The book value increased 2100. That was only because we made some adjustments. And then the market value decreased by 12,174 dollars. That's all I have.
Great report.
Yeah, thanks.
Should put all that bad market stuff at the top some by the time. Feel better about it. Thank you, Hannah. Appreciate it. Go receive and file that, please.
I move to receive and file the financial quarterly report.
Support.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak?
Yes.
Mayor Walagoro?
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Johnson?
All right, next up is unfinished business. First is the Alpena Civic Theater lease renewal, and Steve Schultz, our city engineer, is gonna present that, I believe.
All right. So just based on input from last meeting, I edited number 18, which dealt with termination clause, and I adjusted it to the 180 days notice to the other party, optional 30-day extensions to complete a vacation of the property, may be granted upon review, but shall not extend beyond a total of one year from the initial notice. So that, basically the six months, and then, you know, if they, if they would come to us and say, hey, we just can't do it. We need another month. We grant it, or you don't. I mean, depending on the situation, I guess, so that's.
Appreciate the balance we have.
Yeah.
It's great.
And I, I mean, talking with Bill, they, you know, they were, they accepted that, so.
Steve sent me the draft language with the change, and we think that's entirely acceptable. We, we thank him for his work on this. We'd like to move forward.
I have no issue with that.
I don't. I move that we approve the lease agreement with, oh, where am I?
Civic Theater.
Civic Theater.
With Alpena Civic Theater. I suppose I could make a mention.
Yeah. Support. Sorry, Hannah.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak?
Yes.
Mayor Walagoro?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Johnson? And Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes. Cue.
All right, next up is the amendment for the city manager employment agreement, and Bill Piper is here with that.
Council should have received yesterday a treaty client memo from me with this proposed contract. As council is aware, you recently evaluated Rachel's performance and gave her pretty high marks overall. And during discussions, council gave me authority to get with Rachel and see if we could come up with some proposed changes to the original amendment, which we have, and we think these are consistent with what council was looking for. So at this point, I think it's in final form, and be asking for you consideration of approval unless there's something else that you think needed to be changed that wasn't changed, or some other question that you have regarding any of the specific changes that were made.
I have no issues with the changes that were presented. I'm ready to move forward.
No changes to, some changes.
I move we approve the city manager agreement as amended.
Second.
Councilmember Walchak?
Yes.
Mayor Walagoro?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Motion three.
Cue. Thank you, Rachel, for hanging in there with us while we went through all of that. Good times, good times. All right, last thing on the list today is new business. This is the Wholesome USA Incorporated Appropriations Grant Application. Shannon Smolinski, current Harbor Master, is here with that.
2021, the city of Alpena and Wholesome USA partnered to submit and were subsequently awarded a U.S. Maritime Administration Port Authority Development Grant for upgrades to the wholesome docks to accommodate newer, larger Great Lakes vessels. This plan for the project was developed. It was noted that the design, by the design firm, that the project would cost significantly more than originally anticipated, mostly due to the amount of rock which would, they would need to dredge to accommodate these larger freighters. With the city's support, wholesome pursued additional funding for the overruns. Earlier, the summer appropriation funds to supplement the federal grant were awarded to the city of Alpena and Alpena Harbor to allow wholesome to move forward with the project. As a fiduciary agent for this project, the city is required to submit the grant package, execute the grant agreements, and submit funding requests and reports. Wholesome and their consulting firm have been handling the preparation of all these required documents for both, for both grants, with the city reviewing all the submittals prior to processing. Next up for the appropriation process will be for the city to submit the appropriations grant application for final approval. Once this process has been completed, agreement, agreement documents will be prepared and need to be executed. Copies of the grant application and approximate budget numbers and funding sources are attached for your review. My first recommendation is Harbor Master is for the approval of Resolution Number 23-15, approving the partnership between Wholesome USA Incorporated and the city of Alpena.
I thought we did that before, but that was for.
That was for the very first grant, the 2021 grant.
Okay.
So this is the partnership between us for the appropriations for the dredging additions for the rock.
Perfect, thank you. I have no questions. Has the proposal proposed that?
So I move we approve Resolution Number 2023-15.
Support.
Mayor Walagoro?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak?
It's my second recommendation to approve Rachel Smolinski as the city manager to execute all required documentation necessary for the above project.
I move we approve Rachel to sign all of the documents, but second.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagoro?
Aye. Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.